All right, well, welcome back. Hope you didn't have too quick of a turnaround. Sunday afternoons are always quick, even when we don't meet at 5:00. But I'm glad you're here and glad to be back with you. We started doing these Town Hall meetings back in, I guess it was probably 2018. I became Senior Pastor, co-Senior Pastor, towards the end of 2017. And I think we had our first Town Hall sometime in the beginning of 2018. And it's just really good to take some time every now and then and bring you up to speed on what's going on and to try to take the opportunity to hear from you about the questions you've got and the concerns you've got. And so we're continuing with that tradition tonight. There's gonna be a lot of information that I'm gonna give you about where we're headed and what we're doing. We'll get to that in just a little bit. I want to frame what we're gonna talk about with the text of Scripture, Philippians, Chapter 2. I'm not gonna preach a sermon tonight, but I wanna make a few comments about Philippians, Chapter 2, verses 3 and 4, because I think they have everything to do with our church and with our attitude as individual members in the church. And then we'll go from that into an overview of information, and I'll try to get to as many of your questions as we have time for when that's all through. So Philippians, Chapter 2, verses 3 to 4, this is what God says. "Do nothing from selfishness or empty conceit, but with humility of mind regard one another as more important than yourselves. Do not merely look out for your own personal interests, but also for the interests of others." That's a text of Scripture that is right at the heart of the people we are as human beings. It's right at the heart of one of the most significant sin struggles that we all have, if not the most significant sin struggle, and that is the struggle of putting ourselves first and trampling on everybody else who doesn't do what we want and the way we want it. This is a text that stands in judgment over us nearly every day, all day long, as we interact with people. Are we going to put ourselves first? Or are we gonna count the interest of others as more significant than our own? I think that's important for some things I wanna mention here in a little bit. But where I wanna begin is this verse is actually an explanation of the way that churches die. I wanna explain what I mean by that. It's an explanation of the way churches die, because what you get in Philippians, Chapter 2, verses 3 and 4, is a distinction between principle and preference. There are in life, there are in God's kingdom, timeless realities that are unchanging, not up for debate, not up for grabs. There are also in life preferences that do change a lot. They vary from person to person. They change over the course of time. Principles are timeless and eternal. God is the living God who made the heavens and the earth. Jesus Christ is His Son and the only Savior between God and men. The gospel is to be preached to every single person under heaven and earth. Those kinds of things are timeless principles. They're not up for grabs. And then there are preferences. There are preferences which describe our favorite way to do things, or our favorite time to do things. They're the things we like. I like the color blue. You like the color red. I like to get up early. You like to stay up late. The reality is, one of the great challenges in life is to avoid living like your preferences rise to the level of principles. It's one of the great struggles in life. I say this is a text about why churches die, because churches die, they become irrelevant, they start to decline in numbers and influence, and ultimately cease to exist when they confuse preferences with principles. When a church begins to say, "The way we do things is who we are." We are identified by the way we do things. You put yourself on the track to death. To conflate a preference with a principle is risky business. First Baptist Church has not in its history and is not now considering whether God is the living God, whether Jesus is the only Savior, whether we're gonna preach the gospel to everybody who will stand still long enough, whether we are going to preach the Bible as the perfect authoritative inherent word of God. We have no conversations, we have no questions, we have no discussions about those things. We spend a lot of time figuring out how we're gonna communicate those things. How can we effectively communicate the gospel? When can we worship? Where should we worship? A lot of churches, First Baptist, just like every other church, is at risk of doing this is by saying, "Hey, the way we meet, the cons of music that we sing, where we have our Sunday School classroom, the way we share the gospel," not whether we share the gospel, but the way we share the gospel, that is the principle and it can't change. Well, here's the thing, all those preferences change. And if you lose track of that and you say a preference is the same as a principle and is untouchable, then you're gonna be in trouble real quick. One of the things that I've said is that this spring, as we move into our newly redesigned facilities and as we settle into a schedule that's gonna be permanent, the plan is to have there be a lot of normalcy and a lot of things that don't change for a season. I've been holding that hope out to you, because I know, over the last couple of years, our church has been through it. We started two years ago with a plan to do work around here that needed to be done, and right in the middle of it, right as we got started, we got slammed with this COVID pandemic. And so we have had to consume catastrophic change that had been planned and catastrophic change that had been unplanned. And so just the pastor in me, the part of me that loves you, wants to try to bring as much of that as possible to an end. I wanna hold that out. But for the next few minutes, as we think about Philippians, Chapter 2, I wanna let you know why I'm excited about all this change. I wanna let you know why, while I hope we're on the back end of it, I wanna let you know why I think it has been good for you and good for our church. In 2017, I began to discover the information that I presented to you in the fall of 2018 about the fact that nobody could afford all this space we were using, all of the deferred maintenance, $70 million in deferred maintenance, nobody could afford it, there wasn't any way to make it work. I shared that with you in 2018. I discovered it in 2017. And from the middle of 2017 until towards the end of 2018, when I shared it with you, I was trying to figure out what to do about all this. I wanna let you know that we started out looking at moderate changes. We wanted to do the most amount of good with the smallest amount of changes. And it just became clear that the problems we were facing were going to require not minimal changes, but radical changes. And I had this moment where I took the information, took all this data and some spreadsheets, I took it to a friend of mine who is a pastor of a large church in the Southern Baptist Convention, and I said, "Here's what I'm dealing with. What do you think?" And he said, "To fix this, you're gonna have to make a mess. You're gonna have to make a mess, and there's gonna be a lot of people who don't like you when you're done." Okay? I like it when people like me, you know? I didn't like hearing that. And he said, "There is another way." He said, "There is another way." And I said, "What's the other way?" And he said, "You could stretch this thing out for three or five years." He's like, "You could stretch this out, you could pay the bills, you could borrow from Peter and pay Paul, you could stretch this thing out, and then in three to five years, go to any other church in the country and let somebody else figure it out." That's what he said. He wasn't making a recommendation, he was just like, "You don't have to be the guy who does this. There's another way." Man, I'll just tell you, in the midst of that conversation, I felt revulsion. And I just said, I talked with my wife about this, I said, "I'm not doing that. I'm not gonna be that kind of man, I'm not gonna be that kind of Christian, I'm not gonna be that kind of pastor. I'm not gonna borrow time and leave while First Baptist is weaker and I'm stronger and get out while the getting's good. We're either gonna do this, or I'm not gonna do anything at all." And so we started all the planning that led to 2018, and we've been through all that the last couple of years have brought. I had to decide, is it worth it to be relevant going into the future? Is it worth it to be honest about where we are and fix it? Or are we just gonna just keep letting it happen? I decided I was not gonna do that. And what has happened over the last couple of years is we have been, and this is where I'm saying, this is why I'm thankful for all of the change. I know it's been hard, I know it's been harder on some of you than it's been on me, because you've just been so used to things for so long and have everything be so different is really hard. But here's the blessing. The blessing is, it forces us to choose what we're made of. Do I like my preferences better than the principle of being able to share the gospel going into the future? There are plenty of people. There are plenty of people who would say, I'm, they don't say it out loud, but this is what they think in their heart. "I am fine for the church to die and be irrelevant as long as I don't lose my thing. Don't take away my Sunday School time. Don't take away my reputation. Don't take away the hour I like to come to worship. I don't wanna hear about the church dying. Just give me what I want. Give me the coffee I want and the room I wanna be in, and I don't wanna hear about all this we're in trouble stuff." Well, by the time you have made it with us through all of that and through a pandemic, you've decided, "My preferences are not the most important thing. What matters to me is that we be a church that stands on principle and deals with our issues so that we can relevantly preach the gospel of Christ for another 183 years if the Lord would return." And so I wanna say thank you. I wanna say thank you, because you have, you've had to swallow a lot, you've had to deal with a lot. There are a few more changes coming, nothing really new, nothing other than what we've told you, but just absorbing the fullness of all we've talked about. And then my plan is, what we're praying for, is here in a couple of weeks, we'll be in a schedule and we'll be in space that we can afford and that we can live in and that we can relevantly preach the gospel, and we can focus on not all the logistics, but on the principles of being a biblical faithful New Testament church that's reaching our city in the name of Jesus. But as I give you a lot of information tonight, for some of you, this'll be the first time you've heard it, for others, you've been in meetings where we've talked with you about this, we've tried to hit as many lay leaders as we can before this meeting so that you're not caught off guard. But what you'll see, I'm not gonna give you any information that's gonna shock you like we're not sharing the gospel anymore. We're not gonna meet for worship anymore. We don't think Jesus is alive anymore. There's not gonna be any of those principles at stake. We've settled all those, we are clear on all those. But what's gonna mess with you is, as leaders, we've had to make decisions about times and places and locations, and you're gonna have a chance to feel frustrated if you want. And what I want to remind you is, churches that are dying confuse preferences with principles. And every time you hear something and you think, "That's not the way I like it," I want you to remember this. We've not had any meeting where we've said, "How could we make everyone miserable?" There've been no meetings where we said, "Here's what we want. We want a schedule that makes it as hard on the maximum number of people as possible." Let's pick that. We've done this with a lot of prayer, with a lot of discussion, with a lot of planning, with a lot of rulers and tape measures and blueprints to try to figure out how we can do the most good for the most number of people. We can't do the most good for everybody. We gotta make choices. And so if what we're doing here isn't your favorite, first of all, don't be afraid to say, "Hey, have you thought about this?" So far, as we've entertained other suggestions, we haven't heard a suggestion that we haven't thought through. But if you think of a better way to do it, let us know. You can let us know by talking to Richard Lucas. He's the one you contact with information about such things. And then here's the thing, if it's not gonna be your favorite way, then use it as an opportunity to obey Philippians 2, 3 to 4. "Do nothing from selfishness or empty conceit, but with humility of mind regard one another as more important than yourselves. Do not merely look out for your own personal interests, but also for the interests of others." If the decision and the time and the location isn't best for you, it's best for somebody. And so serve that person and let them have their preference, and you don't have to have yours, okay? Does it have to be your way? No. Is your way God's way? No. No, it's not. Is this thing on? Is your way God's way? No. Does it have to be your way? Is it nice when it's your way? It's nice when it's your way, but it doesn't have to be your way, all right? So serve somebody else and let them have their way. All right, that's that. Let me give you a bunch of information. First, what I'm gonna do is, we have anticipated a lot of questions that you're gonna have about how all this is working out. So I'm gonna give you those anticipated questions, and then for whatever time is left, we'll go to some questions that have been sent in. Okay. So the first question is, I wanna start really general and narrow down to very specific. So the first really general question is, why are we making so many changes to our downtown campus? How did that happen? What are we doing with all this? Well, in September of 2019, I think I said 2018 earlier, but in September of 2019, I shared with our church that we were confronting two great big problems, two big mathematical problems. The first big problem essentially is that we had, after decades of decline, we had dramatically more square footage than a church our size needs. And so we were paying utilities, we were paying maintenance on a bunch of space that we just didn't need. The other problem is that in order to meet our budget over the years of decline, we started borrowing against ourselves and not taking care of all the property that we were using. We didn't need it, but we weren't, we were using it and we weren't taking care of it. And we had a third-party group come in and do a deferred maintenance audit, and we discovered that we had $70 million of deferred maintenance that nobody was going to pay. And so we had a $70 million problem, and what we decided to do, rather than try to fix $70 million of property that we don't need, was to make an investment in a smaller footprint that we do need and that we could afford. We talked about that in September of 2019, and an overwhelming majority, thousands of people stood up, I think there was five or six that voted against it, which by the way, I should say, this is a little bit funny. We took that vote this morning about the school, and I asked if there was anybody, I said, "If you're opposed, say no." And I didn't hear anybody. And so I said, "Oh, it's unanimous." Well, I found out that a couple of people reported that they did hear somebody. I didn't hear it, okay? So I didn't hear the person say no, but I did a little bit of investigation, and I'm not gonna say, nobody needs to be nervous at this point, but I did a little bit of investigation, and it was one person who said no, and it was a child. It was a child who heard me say, "Say no." And so they went, "No." So we're not counting that one, all right? So if you heard it, if you heard it, I wasn't lying, it was a little kid who was just trying to be obedient to the pastor who said, "Say no." "No." So that's how that worked out. But you voted overwhelmingly to approve of that plan, because we wanna be on space that we can afford so that we're not spending our resources on buildings and maintenance that we don't need, but are spending it on maintenance and people and ministry in Jesus' name. All right. Now, that gets to another question. Why did the original plan for the church to focus its ministry activity on the Hobson block not work? So as you'll recall, we had, our plan was to renovate and overhaul the Hobson block. We were gonna put all of our property, all of our activities on one block. We spent months with the leading experts and consultants in the whole country on how you do this. We examined every option imaginable. I mean, we talked about relocating the whole campus, we talked about adding a building, we talked about moving everybody to Noketee, we talked about using other buildings. And what everybody agreed unanimously by the time we'd finished this exhaustive work is that it had to be the Hobson block. But that was gonna require $30 million of construction. We were gonna fund that construction with the sale of our unused property downtown, which was at that time eight or 10 blocks, whatever it was. And we were on track to do that, but that came to a halt during the COVID pandemic. So before the pandemic, we had a number of big developers who, it's their job, they're international developers, and they buy big pieces of property, and they know what they're doing, and they know how to develop these pieces of property. And we had a number of those who were looking at this for a large-scale development, and the deeper we got into COVID, the more the COVID recession took hold and all of those folks ran away. The risk of the COVID recession is more than, more risk than they were willing to tolerate. And then we, on the other hand, were unwilling to take out a $30 million construction loan when we weren't sure that we could pay for it with liquidation of property. So that, so really, honestly, it all came to a halt with COVID. One thing that's really important here is a number of people, now that we're moving into the LMA, a number of people said, "Well, why aren't we gonna move into the LMA to start with?" I actually explained this on September the 8th of 2019, but just in case you're curious, the reason for that is that the LMA block, the block where the LMA worship facility is, that is our most valuable piece of property, because it's what takes our property downtown and makes it one connected unit. Without the LMA, which sits in the center, you've got a series of disconnected blocks. But a large-scale developer that's looking for a large urban space to do development in, they want a big chunk of land, and that big chunk of land is more valuable than the parts. And so as we evaluated this, if you take the LMA out, you essentially, you potentially reduce the deal by tens of millions of dollars, and we didn't wanna do that. Well, once the COVID recession hit and the big developers left, we didn't need a big bunch of contiguous property anymore, and so the value of the LMA switched from being found in resale value to being found in our permanent home for worship. So that's the, that's the reason that happened. All right. So now, now we are moving to the LMA, because we're not looking at selling a big chunk of property anytime soon, and so LMA it is. Why do we need to spend money to renovate the LMA? Wasn't it recently renovated? So yes, about five or six years ago, there was a renovation to the LMA that was, that was done. That renovation, though, was mostly aesthetic. It changed the look of the room, it addressed some sound and lighting, but it was a superficial renovation, and it wasn't done back then, five or six years ago, with a view towards having the LMA be our permanent and only worship auditorium. That was still gonna be this room back when that was done. And so there were a lot of logistics that were never addressed in order to make it that way. So I wanna be really clear, there are five different things, five different realities that we've addressed with the LMA and this renovation that were required. First, we were addressing some structural issues. This was completely unaddressed in the previous renovation, but the structure over there has been compromised with regard to water for years. We've had massive problems with water intrusion, and you can't move all of our stuff over there, make it our permanent worship home, and not make sure the building is sealed. So some of the most important and some of the most expensive work that we've done over there actually is to be sure that the building is sealed against water and isn't leaking and damaging all the stuff that's over there. Second, we had to address some systemic issues. This was another thing that was not addressed during the renovations several years ago. All of the systems over there were old and need some level of updating. As just one example, the HVAC. The HVAC unit that's, that was in that building was installed in the mid-1980s, in the mid-1980s, and when they installed it in the mid-1980s, they bought it used, and it was 10 years old then. That's a really old air conditioning system. It actually was constantly broken. It was literally being held together with pieces of wood and little strips of metal that if you tried to touch it, they like screamed at you and said to keep your hands off of it, because you were gonna destroy the whole HVAC rig up over there. That had to be fixed and has been fixed and will be replaced. There's gonna be some other systemic issues that will need to be fixed, but they're not as urgent as that HVAC issue, and we're on a schedule to take care of that, and I'll say more about that in a little bit. So structural issues, systemic issues, third staging issues. As I mentioned, that renovation was not done with a view towards having it be our permanent worship facility, and so it didn't have enough stage space for all the things that we wanna do on Sunday morning, choir, orchestra, preaching. And so the stage had to be expanded and modified to fit all of that. Another reality over there actually is, there was a lot of problems with accessibility for folks who struggle with disabilities. If you are a disabled person, or if you're related to people, the LMA was not a fun or even a safe place all the time to get around. And this renovation has gone a long way to fixing that. One of the things that we've talked about, we really want our campus to be a lot more friendly to persons with disabilities than it's been in the past, and we're making a, we've made a lot of strides towards that in this renovation. Fourth is sound issues. So I mentioned that the renovation before was aesthetic in nature. It changed the paint, it changed the look. One of the things that it did, when they did the paint job over there during that renovation, is they actually severely damaged the acoustical treatment of the room. A lot of you know this, especially when we first moved in, you would stand there, and there were whole swaths of the auditorium where you literally could not hear what was being said. It was, it was this cacophonous, almost banging, this swarming of noise that you heard. We've taken strides to fix that over the years, but, and you know, with all the work we're doing, there'll probably be some tweaks we have to make when that's over. But look, if faith comes by hearing, you really actually need a room where you can hear the gospel be preached, where you can hear the words that are being sung. And then last, seating issues. We've laughed about this, but actually, the number one complaint about the LMA, since we started using it several years ago, was that those seats on the lower level were so uncomfortable. And so we actually had a few people in our church who were very generous, who gave money specifically to fix the seating and to put pews in, and they go in, God willing, this week. So those are five things that, yes, there was a renovation that was done several years ago, but they didn't address any of those things. All of those things needed to be addressed for it to be our permanent worship facility. All right. What will, here we go. What will the Sunday and Wednesday schedule look like in the new facility? All right. Remember Philippians, Chapter 2, verses 3 to 4. "It doesn't have to be your way." All right. We've labored over this, and we think this is gonna do the most good for the most number of people. There'll be three major gatherings in the LMA each week. On Sunday morning, we will have two separate services with identical content. The first service will begin at 9:00, and the second service will begin at 10:45. During each worship service, Sunday schools will meet throughout our property so that everyone will have the opportunity to attend both Sunday School and worship. And you can see a layout for the schedule on the screen. On Sunday evening, we'll have one worship service that will be different than the two identical morning worship services. The worship service will begin at 6:15. Sunday evening is also when our first kids and first students will both meet for worship. This program begins at 6:00 and concludes at 7:30, giving you time to drop off your students before the evening service and to pick them up once the service is concluded. That's Sunday evening. On Wednesday evening, we'll have our midweek service of prayer and Bible study in the LMA, which will begin at 6:15. Wednesday evening is also the time when our first kids' midweek and first student midweek programming takes place. These programs begin at six and end at 7:30, allowing parents time to drop off their students before the service begins and pick them up after it ends. It's Wednesday evening. Why is it necessary to have two Sunday morning services when we return to the LMA? Why, why do two services? Well, first of all, God has really blessed our church with large numbers of people that want to be here even during a pandemic. We're very, very thankful for that. Large numbers of people want to worship with us every week. And every week, I'm shaking hands and praying with people and hugging people who say this is their first Sunday back. And if you haven't joined us yet, March 21st is going to be a great time to do it. We're very, very thankful for everybody that's here. And it might be possible to cram all of those people into one worship service under normal circumstances, but we're not going to try to do that during the pandemic. We have worked closely with the mayor's office. Our church is one of five churches that's been on a task force, working with the mayor and advising on standards for worship attendance. And we actually are really blessed in our church right now to have a lot of freedom. We're essentially under restaurant standards. We're playing by the same rules as, as everybody else. In a lot of places in the country, churches are singled out for harsher treatment. That is not true of us here, and we are thankful. And so we want to do our best to play by the rules. We want to do our best to accommodate social distancing, and that's going to just require two services. But beyond that, there is another principled reason that isn't going to pass by when COVID is over, if COVID is over. And that is, two services allows our opportunities to expand, to expand opportunities for volunteers to attend worship. If you only have one worship service on Sunday morning, you have all of your volunteers fighting to get into that one worship service. Well, we have hundreds of people every week who are volunteering in the nursery, who are working security, who are ushering, who are at guest services, all kinds of volunteers. And if we ask them to volunteer for the Sunday morning service every week, they never will be in worship with us. We don't want to do that. We want to give everybody an opportunity to serve, and we want to give everybody an opportunity to worship. And two services allows you to volunteer to serve during a worship service without missing the opportunity to attend worship service. So there's real, a principled reason behind serving one another where we want to have two services. All right. Why will we have Sunday school classes happening during each worship service instead of one Sunday school hour in between both services? There's two options here. When you go, when you go multiple services, you got two choices. You can have Sunday school, or you can have a worship service hour with Sunday school after it, and then worship after that. It's called the Oreo model. Two worship services with Sunday school in between. The other option is every time you're having a worship service, you offer Sunday school to go along with it. That's called the mirror model. So we have two worship services and two Sunday school hours. We did that because on our new space, we're going to be talking about this in just a minute, but we're going to be using what we have always called the preschool building and what we've always called the children's building. Those are going to be the two buildings we're going to be using. And we have plenty of space in those buildings. The problem is not a square footage problem, it's a layout problem. So the, the rooms in those spaces weren't designed and built to accommodate the activities we're going to be doing in those spaces once we move in. And so we got plenty of space for everybody, but the walls aren't where we need them to be. And so if we only have one hour of Sunday school with that layout the way it is, we are going to have to tell hundreds of people that we don't have a Sunday school class for them. And we are not going to do that. We're not going to say to hundreds of people who want to come to Sunday school class that you can't come. So the other option is to say, okay, we're going to double our square footage, we're going to double the spaces that we've got, and we're going to have two Sunday school hours so that everybody who wants to come to Sunday school can come. In the short term, this plan allows the most good for the most number of people. But look, I'll just tell you, I don't think it's ideal. I know that there's families that get split up because to go to the Sunday school you want to go to and the worship service you want to go to, you gotta, you gotta divide your family a little bit. I don't think that is ideal. But right now, we're working on a plan to reallocate our space, to put walls in different spaces. And once that's done, we'll take a look at the Sunday school schedule again. But until then, I'm just asking for your help. If, if you're facing a serious problem with the schedule, I really want to know. We want to know. We want to make it better. We want to try to improve it. You can share your concerns with your Sunday school teacher, with the staff person. We're happy to work with you to resolve as many frustrations as possible. But we're confident, I am really confident, that we can work together to make this manageable so that everybody can go to worship, everybody can go to Sunday school until we get the layout problem fixed. So that's the reason we're doing it. And if you've got questions, I'll talk about that as we, as we move along here. All right. Which buildings and garages will we mainly use for our gatherings on Wednesdays and Sundays? So our principal locations for gatherings through the week, starting on March 21st, will be the two buildings and two parking garages that I referenced a minute ago. The first of the two buildings is what has always been called the preschool building. It's going to be a little bit confusing because we're not using it just for preschool anymore. So we'll, we'll talk about that here for just the next few minutes. It's the west building, that building that is west, that will be used for worship. That's where the LMA is. We'll have some educational space in there, some childcare space in there. And it'll also be attached to that garage. We've called it Parking Garage One. But it'll be that parking garage that's attached to that west building, the preschool building. That's going to be used by us a lot. And then the building across the street, we've always called the children's building. It's going to be used for a lot more than children. But it's the building on the east side of our property. It's connected to what has historically been called Parking Garage Two. That, in fact, you can see them in yellow there. They're labeled West Garage, East Garage on the south and the north, and then the west and the east buildings. In that east building, there's going to be a lot of staff offices. I'll just let you know, if you get to see our staff, you can thank them. One of the things, I'm about ready to guarantee, our staff has changed offices more than you have changed Sunday school rooms. They have really taken it on the chin. I heard somebody say amen. Another thing is, our, our staff have a lot different of an office setup than they did before. We've got people who are doubled up in offices, tripled up in offices. I know some people who are quadrupled up in offices to try to give you as much space as possible for Sunday school. So we're really trying to maximize as much as we can, and they're taking Philippians two, three to four to heart. And so you can thank them for that. But those will be the buildings and the property that we use most of the time. Also in the east building, a lot of student ministry space. There's some adult education space in there, some conference rooms for a meeting during the week and all that kind of stuff. So those are the buildings we'll mainly use. Why don't we use the old education building on the Hobson block for Sunday school again? Wouldn't that just solve all our problems if we just open that up? Well, here's the problem. The problem with that is there are real health and safety issues with that building that we discovered just as we were about to move out last year to prepare for the demolition. And there's just no way for us to move back in there. It'd be irresponsible for us to put anybody back in there. There are some areas of the building that are safe. They've had some renovations done to them, and they're safe from, from the problems in the rest of the building. And we will continue to use that for ministry for as long as we can. But there is not the availability of space in the education building to, to fix our Sunday school problem. So we won't be able to use that building. All right. Are more changes on the way? We're preparing for a second phase of the work that is intended to help our senior adult population. Over in that west building, the preschool building next to the LMA, we want to do some renovations over the next year that will ensure that they've got some good educational space that has good access to restrooms, the LMA, parking, entrance, exit, all of that kind of thing. So we're working on that. You'll be hearing some more about that in the weeks and months to come. But we, we think that's the next stop. So you'll be seeing some things move around as we work on that. All right. What, what about progress we're making on selling the property? So we're proceeding with our plans to sell property. We don't, we don't need it. We don't need all of this property down here. And, but we would be thankful for the liquidity to be able to fund ministry. So we are going to receive offers as they come in. We don't have hope that anytime soon, a large offer from a big buyer would come in. We just think the market was too disrupted. And so last year sometime, we abandoned the thought that that was going to happen. But there's still been interest on individual parcels of property. And we're going to receive those as they come in. And when they come in, you'll, you'll hear about them from me. So we'll see what's out there. But in the kindness of God, honestly, you've been faithful. You've continued to fund our ministry. We have. It wasn't the way we thought we were going to. But we've solved our square footage problem. We're living within our means. We don't spend money that we don't have. Our, we have a remarkable staff. I'll even just say Cody Hoskins, our executive pastor, is just doing an incredible job trimming costs, is doing an incredible job being creative. Dan Lammerow, who works over our facilities area, he is working on, I think it's a 10-year, I saw Dan somewhere. It's a 10-year deferred maintenance schedule so that we don't ever run into this $70 million deferred maintenance problem again. So we're thankful for that. And somebody leaked to the newspaper, yeah, you can clap, they're doing great work. And, and I'll tell you, it's a thankless job. Everybody likes it when Uncle Wally is holding out his wallet and giving out $20 bills. And nobody likes it when the money stops flowing. But these guys are doing great work, and I'm very thankful. The newspaper, or somebody leaked the, a peek at the panels that are going to go on the outside of the LMA. That's part of the water intrusion problem that we're going to block. And I just want to let you know, you heard it here first, those, this is about deferred maintenance. Those panels have a 60-year warranty on them. So I'm going to be in heaven when you've got to worry about those. All right. So if anybody tells you about the panels, anytime between now and the next 60 years, tell them to call the warranty company because that's not on me. All right. Okay. I think that's enough for now. We've got a few minutes. And let me see if there, you know, Sean's, Pastor Sean's baby was born. And so usually, we're the dynamic duo up here. And it works out pretty well because he can sift through the questions while I'm talking. But he's not up here, so I gotta, I gotta deal with this all by myself. So let me, let me try to get to as many of these as possible. And we're going to end at six. Is that when this thing's over? It is at six? Okay. You'd think I'd know that. All right. So we'll hit as many of these as possible. Okay. First question I've got. What should we tell people who are afraid to invite their unbelieving friends to the early service when it is early for their families? What should we tell people who are afraid to invite their unbelieving friends to the early service when it's early for their family? So tell them to come to the second service. I, I don't want to miss something in the question. But yeah, look, this is the great thing about two services. If it's too early to come to the first service, then come to the, come to the second service. There's a 10:45 service. So don't just say, hey, look, we got a nine o'clock service, and we got a 10:45 service. Come to either one. One thing, actually, as we were doing our research on this, this was, this is a couple of years old now. But do you know, first of all, the, the churches in the country that are growing the fastest all have multiple services in the morning for some of the reasons that I mentioned a moment ago. Do you know the fastest-growing, the most popular service in the country right now? It's the eight o'clock service. The eight o'clock service is like this wildly popular service right now. We, we don't have an eight o'clock service. Now, you can write in, well, why don't we have an eight o'clock service? It's going to be really popular. The reason it's so popular, it's, it's actually popular for reasons on both ends of the age continuum. Retired people love the early service because they, they're up, they want to come to service, and a lot of them want to go hit the links. And so they, now, you can decide what you think about that. But hey, we got church scratched off, now let's go to the golf course. Young families love the eight o'clock service because so many of them, their kids are up anyway. And so what, let's give up the ghost and go on to church. I don't think, I don't remember having that problem with our kids, but I've blocked a lot of things out from when they were, they were, okay. But at any rate, so maybe, maybe the families you're afraid of won't be as concerned about a nine o'clock service as you think. But if they're concerned about nine, that's why we got a 10:45. Okay. Okay, let's see here. I lost my, my question. This is why, oh, here we go. Will the renovations made to the LMA be able to accommodate the members who are attending the service and still be able to social distance? That's our plan. Our plan is that we will have social distancing. I'll just tell you, you guys do what you want. You wear masks when you want. We put up, we put tape up, you knock the tape down. We spend, we spend all this money. We bought these seat covers for the seats that you hate. And we strapped the covers over the seats. And I literally walked in the first Sunday, and I'm like watching three people like pull, what are these blue things on here for? Pull the blue seat cover off. So you would sit in it. So you guys do whatever in the whole wide world you want. And, you know, look, I'm just telling you, I told our team, like, hey, look, we are going to say we're being socially distanced. We're asking you to wear the mask until you get to social distance, until a socially distanced location. But here's the thing, you're grown-up boys and girls. And so I've said to our team, we're gonna, we're gonna hold the standards out, but we are not a COVID police force. And we're not going to yell at you to put your mask on. We're not going to yell at you that you can't sit where you want to sit. So if you want to wad up the blue seat covers, they don't exist anymore because you didn't like them, you threw them in the trash. If you want to move the tape and say, why do we have this, why do we have this tape on these pews here? You guys sit wherever you, okay, all right. We put the tape there. We will try it every week in the LMA. There's going to be staff people that are going to, and deacons and ushers are going to come there and put the tape on. And then we're going to watch as you pick it off and sit wherever you want to sit. But yes, as I said, one of the reasons for the two services is so that you can be socially distanced. We're going to have some areas sectored out where there are going to be masks only. We're working on some overflow seating. So we want, look, at the end of the day, we are going to create the structures, and then we're going to choose, we're going to allow grown-up men and women to be responsible for their own health decisions. One of the things I'm really thankful for is this live stream people are watching right now. It is not the same. It's not the same to be at church through live stream. I did it for whatever it was, four or five weeks after my, after my surgery last fall. And I got sick of it after two or three weeks. I was like, this is not the same. I'm glad it's there for people that have to use it. And we are going to do our best to, to remind folks of our social distancing and our masking requirements when you're here. Okay. Do we have any potential purchasers of the Hobson block as well as assuming the lease of the middle school building? No. We, we're not going to sell the Hobson block. That, that's not listed for sale. We, like, first of all, that, the Hobson Auditorium is, it is a historic building. Like, if you remember the fight about the building across the street with City Hall, the Hobson is a historic building, and nobody's going to tear that down. So anybody we would sell it to would use it for something we hate. So we're not going to sell that. That's available right now for weddings and for funerals. It can't be used for much more than it's being used for right now without some investment of capital. But we don't have, we're not eyeing that right now. We don't have a plan for that. So we're not actively entertaining purchases on that property. We do have some nibbles on some other pieces of property, and we're evaluating that. We'll be working those things through. And if that ever becomes a thing, you'll hear about it from me. How do you understand what you are reading in the Bible and what it means? Okay, that's a great question, a very different kind of question. I'm thankful to answer it. How do you understand what you are reading in the Bible and what it means? So yeah, it's a question on, I, I take it it's a question of how you interpret the Bible. The, the best way to interpret the Bible is to read it over and over and over and over and over and over again. I started reading the Bible when I first got saved in high school. And I've had a commitment for most of the last long time that every year I'm going to read the Bible through at least once. And I just find that things that didn't make sense to me 20 years ago make easy sense now because as you read the Bible over and over and over and over and over again, you, it just, things just, you start to adopt the biblical worldview, and it begins to make more sense. Every week when I preach, the main thing I do is I just read the text over and over and over and over again. I pray through it over and over and over and over again. And then after that, I, I don't actually go to reading other materials until I actually know what questions I've got, what concerns I've got about the text. And so then when I'm reading other things about the Bible, I'm reading And so then when I'm reading other things about the Bible, I'm reading with intentionality. But honestly, read the Bible over and over and over and over and over again. Get a good study Bible. And if you, if you want more resources than that, then pull me or one of the other pastors aside and we'll, we'll help you. But there's no substitute for reading and rereading and re- rereading the Bible. Will there be future consideration of our Sunday morning worship service being live on TV, at least in the Jacksonville area? I can't imagine that that will happen. We stopped doing that several years ago because, and if somebody remembers the numbers, you can shout them out to me, but we did a deep dive on that. It was costing us half a million dollars a year for that. And for half a million dollars, we were reaching like 20,000 people. Like 20,000 individuals, like 20,000 people saw it for half a million dollars. In fact, I'm, maybe I'm doubling that. It might've been 10,000. So we were spending a massive amount of money for, and none of those people were coming to our church, by the way. In fact, some of our research indicated that those people had our church service on while they were getting ready to go to church at another location, which there's nothing wrong with that if you have a half a million dollars. But we decided this was not going to be the most strategic use of funds for us. And so we went all digital, all online and we reach a lot more people now for just a fraction of that cost. And so without a change in that economic model, we're not looking at a change to that anytime soon. But if you have a half a million dollars and you would like us to go on television, let's talk. All right. But we don't have any, to take the regular tithes and offerings of our folks and put it towards that, I don't believe is a good investment right now. What are the future plans for the Hobson auditorium? We'll keep that. I mean, as long as I'm here, without some catastrophic situation that I can't imagine, we don't have any plans to relinquish the Hobson auditorium. At some point, we will have to make some financial investment into that building just to make sure it's what it needs to be, but we're not talking about that right now. Will FBC be able to provide social distancing in the LMA at Easter services? Should we consider using the main auditorium for the Sunday morning, which usually has the highest attendance, so we do not turn away visitors who might potentially become new members? That is a suggestion and not a question. So here's the thing, no, we won't do that. Let me, and there's two answers to it. One, when we leave this building, we're going to have to leave it. I don't know if you can tell, actually something fell from the ceiling here a few minutes ago. It was kind of funny. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out when we were going to move in to the LMA. There was a window of time when it was going to be ready. But honestly, the reason we chose the 20, we, we talked about having Easter Sunday be the first Sunday in there. The reason we did the 21st is because Scott Cannell spoke up in one of our planning meetings and just said, guys, I don't know if the equipment in the main auditorium is going to make it. So I just want you to know, every week, there is a concern about, are we going to walk in here and turn the system on and it's not going to come on? We are on year 26 of like a 15-year sound system that's a million and a half dollars to replace. And when it goes, like there's no bobby pin and duct tape in the world, they're going to make it come back on. It's just going to have to be pulled out and replaced. To keep this building cool, it requires three chillers and two of them are broken. One of them is rattling around up there right now, just doing its level best to keep you cool. But it makes funny noises and when it, and it's $250,000 a chiller. So we're not making investments in that. To use this building for worship is $300,000 a year and that's without the capital investments for the things that are broken. So when we leave here next week, we're leaving here next week. And the, what it would take to come back, first of all, we don't know if the equipment would work. Second, to haul all the instruments and everything over. So the LMA is, is going to be our home because we think that can be our home. We think we can fit the people who, who are coming. So, so we're, that is going to be home and there really isn't any way to move back and forth. Okay. Now it's 6:01. I'm going to pray in just a minute, but let me give you some announcements. First, we're having our Life Together Fellowship. So this is the town hall part of the fellowship. The actual Life Together Fellowship is happening across the room, across the street in the dining room. For those that have kids, inquire or preschool, please kick them, please pick them up before heading to the fellowship. Don't kick anybody on your way to the fellowship. If you have kids, inquire preschool, please pick them up before heading to the fellowship. Food's available through the Wednesday night serving line, a lot of fun activities, but I really want to encourage you to visit the Reach station that's over there. There's a bunch of resources and ideas for loving your neighbors and inviting them to our church Easter weekend. We've got our Living Hope that's happening on Good Friday night, Saturday and Sunday night. And we've of course got our Easter morning, Easter Sunday morning celebration that's going to happen as, as part of our regular worship. So you'll want to be sure you visit that station to invite people to come to that. And as you leave, ushers will have a map of the activities if you're interested in that. Hey, listen. I am really excited. We're trying to get into a season of normalcy where we get to focus on the work of being a church and not the logistics of making all this property hum. But I just want you to know that over the last couple of years, we've gone through all these changes, whether it's been COVID on the outside or moving buildings on the inside. Whatever it is, the Lord has been doing something in each one of our lives. We've had to decide in so many ways what we're made of. We've had to decide, you know, is this church our family and am I committed to this family even when it's not my way? Am I committed to reaching Jacksonville through this church or am I committed to my way? And as I, as I look across this room, I see the faces of a lot of people and I know that on the other side of that camera lens, there are a lot of people who are pulling for this church and praying for us, who'd be here if you could and are so faithful to contribute and serve in all the ways that you can. I am really excited as we look forward in a couple of weeks to getting back into a season of normalcy where we can love one another, where we can serve one another and we can reach all of Jacksonville with all of Jesus for all of life. I can't wait to do it together with you. And as we get ready to head across the street, let's pray. Father in heaven, lots of information, lots of things to think about and keep track of, I pray that you would watch over us and help us. Father, we want to be a church that reaches all of Jacksonville with all of Jesus for all of life. I'm thankful to be a part of a church that in the midst of crazy transition, in the midst of an unbelievable pandemic, your people have supported the ministry of this church. Your people have funded the work of construction in a renovated worship facility that we're going to get to celebrate moving into in just a few weeks. Father, I am thankful for all of the times that everybody listening to me has swallowed their preferences and done what was good for the church instead of what was their favorite thing. Father, that is a church that is bursting with life, that is bursting with joy, that loves one another, that loves Jesus and is serving a city in His name. I pray that you would take the last couple of years of moving around and shaking things up and Father, make it an investment in rich ministry fruitfulness in the months and years ahead. And Father, we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.